KGMI news time is 6:30. Good evening. We're breaking away right from regular program and right now Dylan Haunkup here in Ferndale at the auditorium at Ferndale High School. It is the Watcom Tea Party Town Hall Forum Number One, and we're going to turn things over now. We're on the air here until 8:30, so stay with us tonight. Here's the different county council members. But again, we're live here on KGMI radio from Ferndale, and I turn it over now to our Master of Ceremonies, Carlo Piano.
Good evening. My name is Carlo Piano. I am President of the Watcom Tea Party Board of Directors, and I'm pleased to welcome you to this 2013 Watcom Tea Party Forum for Watcom County Council Candidates. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pleasure to be here today, Mr. President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one home, in the household, with liberty and justice. The Watcom Tea Party wishes to thank KGMI for covering tonight's forum live on 790 AM, and to all of our generous supporters for their donations. Tonight's forum is presented by the Watcom Tea Party. Watcom Tea Party is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse candidates or issues. We do provide opportunities to educate the public about the issues as they pertain to our mission statement, which is reverse deficit spending and the concentration of power in central government in order to preserve states' rights and individual liberty for future generations. The Watcom Tea Party is supported solely by generous contributions from our supporters, local individuals and businesses of Watcom County. These proceeds go to sponsor events like tonight's candidate forum. If you value this kind of forum and the many speakers that we've brought to the community, we trust that you will continue to support our efforts with your donations. I hope you've had a chance to pick up the candidate's bioforum. Tonight's forum is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to ask questions of the candidates that focus on the issues that you're concerned about. As you came in, you should have been given a survey to rate the candidates' responses this evening. It's in the back page of our packet. We asked that everyone rate the candidates from 1 through 5, with 1 being very unfavorable and 5 being very favorable. We'll tag late and publish the results on watcomteaparty.org. Mr. Jacob DeShane will be the moderator for tonight's forum. Jacob is a Northwest native living in Watcom County for the past eight years. He holds a degree in finance from Western Washington University. His involvement in creating awareness and visibility in the political landscape increased when he started guest hosting with Chris Holgerman on Saturday Morning Live in 2012. Jacob's expertise in the investment management field centers on qualitative analysis, and he's been employed with Asset Advisor in Bellingham for the past five years. He has most recently co-founded Macro Synth Research LLC, an investment information platform for industry professionals. Jacob enjoys home improvement projects, triathlons, and spending time with his new fiancee, Crystal. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Jacob DeShane, the moderator for tonight's Watcom Tea Party candidate forum.
Thank you very much for letting me be the moderator for this evening. Let's not waste any time because our time is precious here tonight. I will go over some of the ground rules and how the candidates will be asked the questions. So, we again want to make sure that we believe that anyone who steps forward to run for republic office deserves our respect. Therefore, candidates will be treated with dignity and consideration. Applauses are fine, but any form of disrespect such as booing is absolutely not allowed. Again, you will see that the candidates are seated by the position they are running for, as well as color coordinated. Again, we'll go through the list here. In District 3, we have Carl Wymer, Michelle Luke. District 2, Ken Mann, Ben Allenboss. District 1, Kathy Kerschner, Barry Buchanan. And at Table 4, for the at-large position, Bill Knutson. And Rudd Brown is running against Bill Knutson, but is unable to attend tonight. Each person will have a chance to go first and to go last as we introduce people to come up and ask questions. It's going to be one question per county seat, and then we'll continue on. So the rotation will give everyone a chance to be first and last. So, I ask the folks to come to the microphone to ask a question. They keep within 15 seconds. The microphones are on both sides of the auditorium. Please choose one that is free, and I will make sure that we have at least three people in the queue ready to go. All right, candidates, you have one minute or less to respond to each question. No speeches, please. And at the end of question and answer period, each candidate will be allowed two minutes in which to address the audience on the topic they wish to discuss. So, with that, I'll have Chris bring up the names drawn out of the hat. First to the microphone, Ken, we have Bob Burr. Second in line will be Wendy Harris. And third will be Melanie Kirk. The first people to respond to this question will be Carl Wymer and Michelle Luke with Bob Burr's question.
My question is, do you believe in climate change? And if so, what do you think is the number one cause of it?
In this case, Wymer is first.
Is this on? People hear me? Okay. Carl Wymer, yes, I believe in climate change. I think there's a variety of things that lend to that, but I think the science is overwhelming from the scientists that have looked at this. The studies are overwhelming that a lot of it's from burning fossil fuels.
I'll agree that climate change. I'm 60 years old. I've witnessed it myself, and I think the technology that's used to measure and track is also going to be the technology that helps us address it.
All right. Thank you very much. And of course, we have time moderators at the front. They will warn you with a warning, with a yellow warning when your time is about to expire. All right, next up, we have Wendy Harris. Your question, please.
Do you support adoption of wildlife management policies and biodiversity strategies that protect habitat connectivity and corridors in Watcom County? And if so, what would you do as an elected official to make that happen?
And this question goes to Ken Mann and Ben Allenboss. Ken, you're first.
Thank you, Jacob, and thank you, Wendy, for the question. I am a huge fan of wildlife. I love our natural areas in Watcom County, especially as we head east. We have a lot of great and wonderful natural areas that are protected. As far as corridors, I'm not exactly sure what you mean unless you're talking about connectivity between different habitat areas. Yeah, I would like to see that. Migration routes and any kind of feeding grounds that we can protect, that's a good thing. As far as concrete specifics right now, that's a bit hard to tackle, but I know you and I have talked about having some sort of advisory commission that would look at wildlife, and that is something I'm willing to support.
Ben Allenboss, and yeah, biodiversity is important. I think it's important. Diversity is important to have in any system that you're looking to have a healthy system in. Diversity in a portfolio is good. Diversity on your farm is good. Diversity in a natural setting is good. I know that edge, edge is where a lot of your wildlife like to hang out. A lot of that edge happens on property lines where brush is able to grow. I think that the CREP program in the ag mines has done a lot to enhance edge, which would enhance connectivity, and I think those are all good things.
All right, next up, Melanie Kirk.
So, Cross Manufacturing is a team in Watcom County. What are you going to do to encourage its businesses like them and other businesses to come to Watcom County?
This goes to Kerschner and Ken. Kerschner, you're first.
Kathy Kerschner, running for reelection to Watcom County Council, District 1. Cross Manufacturing is leading Watcom County. They wanted to expand their business, and the zoning did not allow for that. So, how do we bring businesses to Watcom County? We make sure that we have stable, predictable zoning and regulation in place so that when somebody has money to invest in Watcom County, they know that the rug's not going to be pulled out from them in five years when the piece of property they may have invested in to build a business is now zoned where they're not able to build that business. So, I've targeted the council to make sure that the commercial areas in our county that are zoned commercial remain commercial so that we have places for businesses to locate, and I'll continue to do that if we elect it.
Thank you for the question. Barry Buchanan, running for County Council, District 1. And I believe that jobs and businesses in Watcom County are going to be attractive here because of the great natural setting we have, and that's something we need to protect. I also think that we need to be very wise in how we use our economic development investment funds in making sure that we're using that money to promote business in Watcom County to be able to seed business, not using it for things like the Linden Water Plant. That's not really a good use for economic development funds. We need those funds to generate positive influence on our community and our economic development here.
All right, thank you. And can we get the next round of people up? Joan Dow, Richard May, Greg Brown, Natalie McClendon. Begin when you're ready.
Pipes in the jail have burst twice recently, spewing sewage all over furniture and files. Are you aware of the impact these conditions have on staff and the inmates?
Bill Knutson.
I'm Bill Knutson. I'm running for reelection to Watcom County Council. I'm definitely aware of what's going on in the jail. I'm on the Sheriff's Advisory Board. I work with, I go into that jail every month, and I don't know how many of you have been in the basement of the jail. How many of you saw when the pipes back up and stuff starts coming into the basement? But when you have raw sewage coming into your office, it isn't a very, it isn't a very welcoming environment to perform your duties. So, we definitely need to build a new jail. We need to get this done. We've got folks working on it. We've got a very good sheriff, Sheriff Elfo, and we have a lot of work to be done, but yeah, I'm aware of it, and I'm going to work to see that we get something done.
All right. New rotation. So, let's, again, this goes back to you, Bill. Please go ahead, Richard.
All right. Do you agree that if we don't follow the Growth Management Act, that it could cost all of the rest of the taxpayers huge tax hikes, disply all the infrastructure and services, and people are just building anything everywhere they want?
I believe that we need a legal opinion that applies to the Growth Management Act, not the opinion of a board that is appointed, politically appointed board. We, and if you're, if it costs people money to defend the rights of the citizens of Watcom County, I think that if it was, if you'd put yourself in the seat of that business owner, that has his property rezoned because of that board's opinion, I think that you would want us to defend the actions as well. I think if, if you look at what we're doing to businesses in Watcom County by not defending this, I think it's, I think it's a travesty. So, I would hope that people would understand that all I want to do is defend, defend the citizens of Watcom County when it comes to what they can do with their property.
And I get the next following two people to come to the microphones. I'm sorry, the penmanship here, but M. Lamont and Gary Jenson. Next question is Greg Brown, and this goes to, we got Buchanan and Kerschner, with Buchanan going first.
Yes, disregarding the terminal, what do you believe is your biggest project in the next four years, and why is it your number one project?
Could you repeat the first part of the question? Sorry.
Disregarding the terminal, what do you think is the biggest challenge for you the next four years, and why is it a challenge?
Well, I think the biggest challenge will be making sure we have a jail that's built to the scale of our needs, making sure that it's, we have the ability to expand it in the future, but we have to make sure that we're not putting too much taxpayer dollars into a facility that's incarcerated in nature. The United States is the number one incarcerated nation in the world, and we need to change that paradigm and start looking at rehabilitation programs that help mental health, help substance abuse, but I believe that we need a, we need a, it's going to be probably the biggest project that we will face in the next few years.
Did you ask project, Greg, or issue? Well, I agree that I think that the jail is the biggest project, disregarding the terminal, but I'll answer a different way because I'll answer about another issue that I think is just as important, if not more so important, to our county's economy, and that is the issue of water. We have got a big problem with water. We need to get that problem solved. Our farmers need to know that they have water to run their farms. Our businesses need to know that they've got water to run their businesses, and our citizens need to be able to count on us to ensure that they've got clean drinking water. And I have been a leader on the council for making sure that Lake Watcom continues to be progressing towards a better state. Several projects have been put in that filter storm water around the lake. We are very close to finally getting some development regulations that will help homeowners know what they have to do to prevent runoff from their property. We have alerted the city of Bellingham to an issue, I'm out of time, with a diversion that's putting lots of phosphorus in the lake, and so that's what I think we need to keep working on.
And then we got folks to the microphone that should be stacking up. We got Lamont, last name Lamont, and then Gary Jenson.
Okay, this is Gary Lamont. I have a question.
Okay, thank you. Chris Henderson, and Dale Peterson, please. All right, Natalie McClendon.
Okay. A local businessman worked for several years to cite wind energy in Watcom County, yet financing and a good business plan in place, yet the majority, conservative majority on the council voted to shut that project down. How would you have voted, or did you vote on it, and how would you support this kind of business?
Allenboss is first.
Green, green energy in general or wind energy specifically?
Well, this was a specific project. You were on the planning commission. You remember it?
Okay. I wasn't on the planning commission when that came through, but in an industrial area, I think that that would probably be a good place to have it. It'd be interesting to see windmills throughout the refineries, tank farms. I think that would be a nice blend of green energy versus conventional energy. Another type of green energy that I really think is neat here in the county is the dairy farms and their digesters, and the way that they're using the cow manure to keep America rolling.
This is Ken Mann, seeking reelection to the county council. The wind energy ordinance came forward, and it's interesting, we were just hearing about how it's important to have a predictable, consistent regulatory environment in order to support small businesses, and I totally agree with that. We need consistent and clear rules, and this was a project where an applicant applied under the existing rules, he had financing in place, and the council passed an emergency, an emergency moratorium on wind energy systems to block his project, and I just thought that was a lousy move. It sends a terrible message to entrepreneurs anywhere, whether it's wind energy, or biofuel, or building cars, or importing coal, or exporting coal. If you're changing the rules after an application is made, that has a chilling effect on businesses and entrepreneurs. So, I opposed the moratorium, I supported the applicant, and I supported having wind energy in Watcom County, and I'm disappointed. That was one of my disappointments on the council the last four years.
All right, we got Chris Henderson.
How do you feel about the ever increasing UN Agenda 21 smart code and growth management regulations being imposed on Watcom citizens with Higley's support?
Well, I can talk, this is Michelle Luke. I can talk about the comp plan that we are mandated to work on to be completed by 2016. I think that Watcom County failed small cities and families last time by shrinking their UGA's, their ability to promote growth and opportunity for businesses and jobs for families, and I'm hoping that in this go-around, we can work more closely with the cities and respect their work. The leaders of our cities know what they need. They've got their own leadership. They know the details, and I encourage that we can work more closely with them this time.
I think the UN Agenda 21 resolution has been overblown to some degree. It was a resolution that's not binding on the countries that signed it. There's lots of things within that resolution that have been moving forward, and as Michelle just talked about, a lot of our Growth Management Act here tries to embrace some of the ideas of trying to put the growth in the places you want it and maintain resource lands for forestry farming and just real character. So, I understand why people get confused, but I think if you've ever watched the UN, they're not coordinated enough to take over the world, so I'm not very, 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 very into that.
However, Higley is a harm with the UN, correct?
I'm sorry?
Higley is a harm of the UN.
We want to keep it to one question, though.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, all right, right here. Chris Henderson, is that right? No, I'm sorry. Who did I have here?
This is over here.
Here.
Oh. Go ahead, Mr. Jensen.
So, all of you, I don't think I have to explain it. You know what's happening at Slater Road. You know what could happen in the future. I'm interested, what is your vision and your vision for the future of the Slater Road Exchange and all the land around it?
Okay, this one goes to Matt and Ellenboss first.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. This is Ken Mann, seeking reelection to the county council. Slater and I filed that interchange. A lot of that land was purchased recently by the Lummi Nation, and they applied to the powers that be to have it converted into trust land. That was something that the council opposed, seven to zero. We did not support their application. There's also been a jail proposed for that area. I don't know if you were including that proposal. Okay, the jail may or may not be near there, but it was proposed to be on that patch of ground. That has also been pretty much ruled out at this point now that a tribe has bought the land. So, I see it as staying privately owned by the Lummi tribe, and they can do what is allowable under the law there, and hopefully we have some clear and consistent regulations that they can abide by.
Ben Allenboss, Slater Road, and my understanding of that is that the tribe owns the land, and as private landowners, they are probably going to do with it what they see fit and what is allowed within the law. I've heard that they may come up against challenges as the Growth Management Act calls for buffer space between, between cities, and if that gets developed fully, it could kind of create a connection there between Bellingham and Ferndale. It's an interesting, in-depth, complicated topic.
Next up, Dale Peterson.
When you consider the population of Watcom County is melting about every four years, and the availability of water to agriculture is somewhat in question, how are we going to save agriculture in this county? I'm not talking just about your term of office for the next 10 years, I'm thinking over 100 years. Got to start doing things now. How are we going to save agriculture?
Kerschner, Buchanan. Kerschner, you're first. And before you begin, can I get Ellen Baker, Ray Barabo, and Elliot Fine to the microphones, please?
Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to save agriculture by making sure that a farmer can use their property to make product that they can sell. One of the current proposals in the council right now is to allow packing houses on agricultural land, and if the farmer who raises the cows and uses them, melts them for dairy, was allowed to then get a value at the end of that cow's life by processing them for their meat, then the farmer then has a win-win there. And so, those kind of ideas need to be seriously considered when we talk about saving agriculture. We need to let the farmers tell us what they need, and we need to listen to them.
Yeah, Barry Buchanan here. I think this is a great example of why we have the Growth Management Act. If we concentrate our population growth in the cities, we can have water systems that can service our residents much more efficiently than we can if we try to develop out into the county and ruin the rural character of the county by sprawl out in the county. This will ensure that our use of water is much more efficient. We need to, I agree with what Kathy said, we do need to listen to the farmers because they are the people that are the experts on this. But by complying with growth management, we are conserving those resources for the best use and the most concentrated use so we can be efficient in the use of our natural resources.
Everyone takes an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington. Can you describe for us your sense of duty to protecting the civil liberties of individual citizens in comparison to your desire to provide government services?
Bill Knutson.
Yeah, this is Bill Knutson. And civil liberties, you know, sometimes in government, it seems like we regulate everything to death and we're taking away people's rights. And it wasn't that long ago that we, you know, some of the things we've done to people's property in the last four years since I've been on the council have bordered on that. I mean, you look at what our forefathers got mad at as far as taxation and regulations, it wasn't much different than telling someone that the piece of property they bought and paid a premium for because it was zoned, let's say, commercial, and, well, we're going to change that because somebody in Olympia thinks it should be something else, and we're going to change it to residential, and your value is lost, and we're not going to compensate you anything for that. You know, all, it seems like a lot of our liberties are getting picked away. It's kind of like the frog in a pot of water. They just turn the temperature up a little bit at a time, and do it gradually, so you don't notice it. But, one of these days, we need to wake up and realize what we've lost.
Next, Ray Barabo.
Yes, my question is about the jail project and the overall justice system. Are you aware, is this going to, back to Barry Buchanan and Kathy now?
That is correct, yes.
That is correct, good. That's where I wanted to go. So, the question is...
Or, no, excuse me, pardon me, no, this goes to Wymer and Luke. I apologize, I've got the wrong spot.
Elliot, you're up.
Go ahead.
Have you ever had to hire and fire, and/or fire somebody in your job? And have you ever had to create a budget that you had to stick to? And if so, would you please expound upon it?
You're first. That is correct.
Yes, I've run three different businesses in Waukesha County, one of them here in Ferndale. The biggest business I ran, it started at four employees, and by the time I quit, 13 years later, I'd have 54 employees. And I certainly had to hire and fire people throughout more than 20 years of, within those three businesses. It's always a painful process. Certainly, I always had to live within budgets, too. The organization that I currently run, we have a budget of about $400,000 a year, and there isn't any, you know, we can't print money like the federal government can, so you have to learn to live within a budget, and certainly that's true with all of those businesses.
Michelle Luke, I'm not hired or fired, but I've had two businesses, and have had to live within a budget, and plan a budget, and on an income that's commission-based, where it's highs and lows, it's a challenge. I've also had the opportunity to budget for seniors in our family when they were not capable of managing their own money, and to make sure they didn't, to make sure that they had everything they needed, and to make sure that their money lasted for them.
All right, go ahead, Ray.
Call Moore.
Oh, Karen Brown. And Penny Callmore.
Will you change the way you did?
Chris?
You want to say, is that the last question to keep things moving?
Yeah, so the next, the next question will be to Buchanan and Kerschner.
Okay, showtime. Ray Barabo is back at the mic. And the question is about the jail project. A lot of people have said that we put too many people in jail, and we need to build a right-sized jail. Do you know the jail alternatives and jail diversion programs that currently exist in Waukesha County, and do you know the difference between those two things?
We got Buchanan first.
The last part of your question, yes, I do know that there's an alternative site out in the Baker-Duesper area, and the difference being that it's a minimum, minimum security facility. As far as the project goes, I still believe, when we, when we look at budgets, municipal budgets, county budgets, state budgets, we have a disproportionate amount of money that we put into incarceration, and unfortunately, it has to go into law enforcement. As a society, we need to be able to manage ourselves and be able to rehabilitate those who need it, so we can start getting that rate down. So, again, I said I believe in that we need to have a jail that's affordable, something that the taxpayers can afford. It needs to be modular, so we can expand it in the future, and, but we just need to take a good, careful look at the bigger picture, I believe.
This is Kathy Kerschner, and yes, I'm aware of the alternatives. I sit as the, as a member on the North Sound Mental Health Association's Board, the governing board that spends millions of dollars in a five-county region on mental health services to people in our communities that need it. The issue with the jail and sentencing is that those, those sentencing guidelines aren't negotiable. We don't get to tell the state that we're not going to follow sentencing guidelines, and when somebody commits a crime, we need a place that we can safely house them, and we, we need a place in our jail where we can provide some of these programs, because our current jail does not have the room to even provide some of these rehabilitative services that would be beneficial to the inmates.
Next, we have Karen Brown. And this is Bill Cunningham.
Okay. Right now, Waukesha County uses a non-scientific method to establish aquifer placements. They use the model of if it is lowlands, then there must be an aquifer under there. People are being regulated on false information, and we need to do current and proper science to know where those aquifers are. What would you do to change that?
Yeah, this is Bill Cunningham, and I'm familiar with what happened there, and the council, I think, jumped to conclusions in this aquifer recharge zone. If they would have participated in the water symposium that we had, they would have got the data that said that we haven't got the data to determine what our aquifer recharge zones are, and the continuity is with the surface water extractions, and all that data, it still needs to be gone through, and to make decisions on it is premature, and it's unfortunate that some of these ordinances that they did that with the packing house in particular, it pretty much will nullify it from most of the ag zone by, by jumping to conclusions like that. So, I would, I would suggest that before we jump to conclusions, you should at least have the data in hand before you make decisions, so, yeah.
Well, Judy steps up to the mic, can I get Matt Penny, is it? And Ellen McKee? Go ahead.
I would like to, what are you going to do to protect rural living for myself, my children, and my grandchildren? As in, I'm a property owner, and my child wants, I'm going to sell or give her five acres for him, and how are they going to be able to, how am I going to know they're going to be able to put a well on their property, build a house? That's my question. How are you going to protect my family's rural living?
So, that's for Luke, then. I'm sorry, yeah, for Luke, then, Wymer.
Michelle Luke, I, I think I understand the question of how is the county going to protect your rural, rural lifestyle? And again, that's through the comp plan, and, and the update that we're working on, and working closely with the cities and rural communities. And I, I'm very much an advocate for public participation, and I think that there will be opportunities for the public to be involved, and I, I think you should bring those questions to meetings. It's, it's a plan for all of us, it's not just a plan for some of us.
Yeah, and I appreciate your question about rural lifestyle. I've lived in Waukesha County for 29 years now, and I've never lived within the city limits of any of the cities in the county. I've always lived out in the rural areas, so I really, I, and I do that because I like the rural lifestyle. I think your question had a lot to do with a lot of the issues going on right now about well drilling and well, whether lots will be allowed to drill wells, and that's something that's not only up to the county, and that's something we're going to have to work out with the state, too, because the state controls a lot of the water rights issues. That's one of the reasons I support bringing back together the planning unit for the watershed planning here, because it's a multi-stakeholder diverse group that will bring a lot of information to the table about what's at stake for protecting those water rights. So, there is water for farmers, and for small cities, and for industrial development, and for rural landowners that want to put in a well for their 5,000 yelling innings in.
Thank you much. Next, we have Penny.
Yes, Penny Cowan. In the matter of the reconvenance, will the council work to ensure that sustainable timber harvesting will be allowed?
And that's for, we got Ellen Boss then Ken Mann.
Well, that land was commercial forest designation, which is a resource land. I think an excellent idea would be to, it must be a park, as if that's, you know, what the purpose was. The target kind of moved on what the purpose of, of the reconvenance was, but my understanding is it needed to be a park. And if it must be a park, I think that a great idea would be to turn it into an environmental interpretive and learning center on the sustainable harvest of the timber, so we could help pay for our eight times the acreage of any other county park department.
Thank you for that question. This is Ken Mann. I voted for the reconvenance, I supported it. I think it was a great deal for Waukesha County. Yes, it's eight times bigger than any other park, and we got it for about one eight-hundredth the price of any other park. And going forward, we will have a robust public process to determine how we are going to manage that land, what the park will look like, where there will be accesses, what types of activities will be allowed, how they will be managed. All of that has been under discussion, but we need to engage the public on that. As far as specifics on sustainable forestry, I think that's a great idea. I am, I am not opposed to having forestry that is in the areas where it's safe. There's a lot of steep slopes, there's a lot of creeks and rivers there, we got to be careful of that, but I would certainly support looking at that.
All right, do we have a Matthew who's going to step up to the mic? All right, then, go ahead, Ellen.
When our tax dollars come in, should they be spent where they're meant to be, or should we spend, or would you prefer they be spent on pet projects that come along?
This question is for Wymer then Luke, and can I have, in the meantime, Chet Dow and Michael Lilquest to the microphones.
Well, I think we're all in favor of pet projects up here. I'm sure we're all in favor of it. No, in reality, when your taxes come in, they go into certain funds, and they can't go, be used for things that don't, don't, don't attach to those funds. The state audits the county every year, and if we try to take something that comes into the general fund or to the road fund and use it for a purpose that it's not meant to be used for, we get dinged by the state auditor. So, so I think you're protected from that, although there's grand leeway from that, and some things that you may think is a pet project, other people in the crowd may think that's perfectly fine.
Michelle Luke, I, I think that the funds that come in are designated, and we do see on the planning commission, in, in planning, in capital improvement planning, in capital facilities planning, we do see how those funds are designated, and, and where they go, and it may look like they're diverted at times, but I think for the most part, they go where they're supposed to.
All right, thank you much. Chet Dow here to the microphone. This is for Mann then Ellen Boss.
I would like you folks to state your position on re-establishing the Wire One Planning Unit, and I'd like to hear your rationale for or against doing so.
I support, but this is Ken Mann, seeking reelection to the county council. I support re, we changed the language, actually, Mr. Dow, in the resolution, so I think we changed it to recognizing the planning unit as the established advisory body. And I support it, I've worked with Councilmember Brenner on getting the language just right, and it's a, it's a great collection of different caucuses, of people who have expertise in water law, water use, what the needs are in Waukesha County, and they absolutely should be advising us, and I'll vote for the resolution when it comes for us, and I think that's pretty much covers it.
I, too, would support the planning unit. Not only is it the state law, but the stakeholders having a say in what they, what, how we use our water is very important. Being able to use our water is important, not only for farmers, not only for industry, but for living in general. It all takes water, and we need to sort it out for, for a certain, more certain future, but that needs to include use.
And we get to the microphone, John Kirk and Donna Clark. Michael Lilquest, your question, please, and it's directed to Kerschner then Buchanan.
Several years ago, the American Farmland Trust identified that 58% of farmland in America is under threat of urbanization and conversion to houses. Here in Waukesha County, we have 80,000 acres of ag. People in the know say we need at least 100,000 acres to, a critical mass to keep ag alive in our community. Several years ago, 2007, Ag Advisory Commission identified a way of increasing the number of acres zoned ag in Waukesha County by using rural study areas. Can you please tell me why the county has not undertaken actions to actually increase the number of acres zoned ag, instead it seems to be allowing that urbanization and residences out in the county? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that question, Michael. This is Kathy Kerschner. Just recently, we did get one of the rural study area reports back, and it appears on the surface that Waukesha County has between 125 and 140 acres of land that is being used for agricultural purposes. And so, you know, I think that we need to continue to, to look at the fact that we've got ag zone land and land zone rural, and people in the rural areas are farming and contributing to our agricultural industry. But it is something that we need to continue to watch out for, and I know that when we update the comp plan this next go-around, we're going to be looking carefully at making sure that we are protecting ag when we are looking at UGAs and any kind of growth. Thank you.
And this is Barry Buchanan again. And for me, it comes back again to growth management, and how we manage growth, you know, in a regional-thinking way, and I think making sure that our UGAs are supporting our, our, the growth that we have, immediate growth from our urban centers is a good thing, but they need to be kept small, so we can make sure to continue to protect the ag land that we have. My grandparents, my great-grandparents moved here in 1907, and they, they moved here because of the availability of great land, abundant water, fisheries, and they came from Norway, so it was just a natural setting for them. They called it home when they got here. I want to make sure that future generations have the opportunity to be successful in this county, and also to have the beautiful resources that we have. So, again, it's growth management. How do we manage our growth in a wise way that gets the most out of our region, both economically and environmentally?
John Kirk, you're up to the microphone. This is for Bill Cunningham.
In the last four years, the five lead entities of the Waukesha Wire One have embedded Department Ecology and Puget Sound Planning staff and objectives in water management plans, and have blocked local water caucus leadership. Do you support the county planners who prioritize the Department Ecology and Puget Sound Partnership agenda?
Well, I think we got a little confused on, on the question, but are you referring to the WIT? Or you said Wire One?
WIT is part of the Puget Sound Partnership Initiative. Wire One is Waukesha, Washington and regional inventory area.
Right.
And basically, the outside entities, Puget Sound Partnership and DOE, have had a major place at the table, and the water caucuses have been shut out, and the local planners go with the DOE and the PSP agenda. Do you support the local planners in their idea that the outsiders are more important than the local people?
No, what I support is I support local control over this stuff. But I also serve on Puget Sound Partnership and it was involved in setting up the Puget Sound Partnership's action agenda and how to clean up Puget Sound. Now, going forward, we need to have all the stakeholders involved in working on a solution. The tribes, the county, the agriculture, rural folks, everybody needs to be involved and working on some sort of a solution. Because you've heard from a number of folks on this that are sitting up here, that water is one of the big issues that we've got facing us. Now, I would argue, I don't, living here all my life, to tell me that there's a shortage of water would be, I find it hard to believe. I mean, we have a hard time keeping it in the rivers. We have a hard time keeping it, you know, we have a lot, we have a lot of water in Waukun County. We have some of the records, snowfall, record rains. So, but we need to work together to get something done. And local input's going to be vital. That's why we're saying we're setting up the Wire One in 534. Thank you.
For Donna speaks, can I get Dave Uncles and Vivian Small to the microphones, please? All right, Donna Clark, your question.
Well, I'm sure it's water.
This is back to Knutson.
Knutson, water, water everywhere. We have lots of it. And if anybody tries to tell you we don't, I'm sorry. I do want to address the old issue, 1965, we didn't have much growth around the lake and Southern Valley came in and oh, we were promised a road, a road to go take all that traffic off of Lake Waukun Boulevard over to the connector to U Street and also it wasn't come out in terrorist place. It never happened. Now, I'm not against growth. I want growth. But if we are going to have growth, we have to deal with the past as well as the future. How would you deal with this situation going the corridor of Lake Way Drive coming all the way from Southern Valley?
Well, we're going to need some cooperation from the city if anything is going to be done. Though, there is a lot of folks driving that road every morning. I drove through there. You know, you've got all the folks coming out of Southern Valley trying to get into town. And there are some issues there, you know, whether we've got the funds to put a new road in or the easements or, you know, that, we're looking at a huge expense to try and put another road for Waukun County. When we start looking at easements involved in some of the other projects we have, they amount to millions of dollars. So I couldn't imagine what we would be looking at to do something like that. And I don't know what they did in 1965 as far as pursuing any kind of easements towards getting that done.
We did have the easements and the county council gave up the easement up on the hill. But the problem still exists. And if you want to save our water, if you want to save our lake, we need to go backwards as well as forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, you're up. Oh, Dave, you're past her. Nope, Dave, we'll come to the microphone. This is to Buchanan.
I didn't really have a question, but I'll ask one. Do you think that Waukun County is well-served by the Growth Management Act?
I, this is Barry Buchanan. I think Waukun County would be well-served by the Growth Management Act if we weren't trying to litigate it all the time and spending a lot of taxpayer resources for something that's, to be honest with you, I think we're going to lose. I think the Growth Management Act's going to prevail. And we have to give it a chance. We have to give it a chance to do what it was designed to do, which is to protect ag land, protect rural land, and to grow, put the growth where the water is, where the infrastructure is, where transportation is. It just makes sense. Waukun County will be very well-served if we can just kind of all calm down a little bit, understand what the Growth Management Act is trying to accomplish, and work together. We must work together. That's the most important thing.
Yes, I think that the Growth Management Act, which was passed in 1990, is in desperate need of an update by our state legislature. When we're talking about Growth Management Act tonight, most of us are talking about one chapter and it is the rural element. But the Growth Management Act actually covers many different areas of growth and how we manage it in our county. It has an economics chapter. It has a transportation chapter. It has an ag chapter, a forestry chapter, a mineral and resource land chapter. And so I can't make a blanket statement that I think the Growth Management Act has not served us well. I think that the county has implemented the Growth Management Act and we're working out details. We're working out the last few details where there hasn't been agreement. And we'll continue to do that. We want to make sure that the Growth Management Act serves our rural communities, their lifestyle, their way of living, how they make their living. And I'm out of time. Thank you Kathy.
Next, folks, to the microphone, Chris Alterman and Bessie Kirk. Go ahead Vivian.
Thank you. On the reconvenance that the county council voted on, my question is, did any of the council members go out there and walk it to see what you're voting on? In the future, would you do that or not? If you had walked it, you'd have seen that it's not the park land.
That goes to Ellen Boss first.
No, I'm not on the council yet. So I didn't go walk it. But on the planning commission, when there's issues that arise that are specific parcels or properties or areas, yes, I try and do site visits. I think it's helpful to, a picture's worth a thousand words and the landscapes, a 3D picture, so you do multiplication.
This is Ken Mann. Yes, I did go out there three times, twice on the south side of the lake and once on the north side. And I thought it was an outstanding place for a park and to have public access and have some view spots that you could hike to. It is absolutely spectacular, stupendous views and landscapes up there. And I'm really excited that people who live in Waukun County are going to have the opportunity to go out there and explore it. So yes, I did visit it. And that is something that I think is really important, as Ben just pointed out, to go for site visits. Just yesterday, I was with some other council members visiting a site along the Nook St. River. That's a road named Strawberry Field. And you have to go and see these places and talk to folks. Land use is so complicated and litigious that if you don't have a real sense of the ground and the land, it just becomes a bunch of paperwork and that's not a good way to make decisions.
All right, thank you. Next, two folks up to the microphone here real fast. We've got Linda Morale and Carl Lupiano. In the meantime, can I hear Chris Alterman?
Yes. Recently, WWU's report from Huxley shows that the dissolved oxygen levels in Lake Waukun, the water quality to be stabilized and improving, the phosphorus levels to be declining. Given this report, would you support that the Department of Ecology should redo its water quality study to see if Lake Waukun can be reassessed and taken off the impaired water body listing? Why? Yes or no? And why or why not?
Chris goes to Luke.
Michelle Luke. I think that the Lake Waukun water quality issue is always going to be on our front burner. It's the water for half of our population. And it's good news that the levels are improving. But I think that we still need to tend to that because of development. I heartily support regional systems around the lake, like the one in the Silver Beach area. I think that the stormwater needs to be filtered, whether it's for phosphorus issues or other pollutants. It is a drinking water source. And I think that you take the areas with the most development and start there and work around and eventually even look at a sewer system around the lake because it is the drinking water source.
This is Carl Limber. And you know, that study has been going on for years and I don't think you can change 180 degrees just based on one year. You need a number of years of data. There was some hopeful stuff in the data this year that showed that things had leveled off or gone down, although there was some disheartening stuff there too. There's byproducts in Lake Waukun's drinking water that can cause cancer. And the city is in the process of investing several millions of dollars in their water treatment plant to make sure they get those out. Those are directly tied to increases in algae in the lake. So while some of the indicators were going down, other ones were getting worse and it's costing millions of dollars, we need long-term trends before we try to back away from our responsibilities on Lake Waukun.
All right, Bessie, you're up.
Ground and upstream water rights will likely be decided in the next four years. Will you protect farm water withdrawal or do you first support elastic water rights claimed by Waukun First Nations group?
That's Mann then Ellen Boss.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand everything you said. Could you slow down a little when you asked that?
Will you protect farm water withdrawals or do you first support elastic water rights claimed by the Indians?
The water rights issue is, that's what you said in the beginning, that it'll be decided in the next four years. I wish that would be true. If it's decided in the next 20 years, honestly, we could probably consider that to be a win. I don't think this is a question of who the county is going to vote for or side with. I will always side with the people of Waukun County. But this is going to be decided in a court of law. It's going to get litigated. You can guarantee it. And I think the best thing we can do is work with the First Nations, work with all the water users. And that goes back to the planning unit question, to figure out a way to avoid litigation. Because there is enough water. If we're smart, if we work together, we can have enough for everybody. Litigation is, I'm willing to do it, but I really hope we can avoid it.
Oh boy, where do I start? So I think to start off with, even though technically the tribes may not be residents of Waukun County, they're still members of our community. I have a really hard time with either or propositions. Either we're going to have water for farmers or we're going to have water for salmon. I think there definitely is water for both. Like Bill pointed out earlier, we have world record snowfall in our watershed. We lead the country in precipitation. If we don't have enough water for salmon and enough water for agriculture and enough water for living in Waukun County, where do we have enough water? So, yeah, I don't view that as an either or proposition. We can definitely have both. We just need to make sure that our goals and our targets are attainable.
Thank you. Linda, to the microphone.
Hi, my question is about the reconvenance and the funds that were used. It's my understanding that there is $6 million in the futures fund. I think that's what it's called. $300,000 was used for the reconvenance purchase and for maintaining all of our coming parks. Will that fund also be used to develop the reconvened land? And if not, where will that money come from?
That goes to, sorry, Kerschner first then Buchanan.
Okay, there's a fund called the Waukun Conservation Futures Fund that you're referring to? Yes. And that fund is your tax dollars set aside to buy land that we want to preserve. And yes, we are going to be making a, when the official transfer is done, we'll make a transfer out of the Conservation Futures Fund back into the fund, I think it's the general fund that paid for it. So that general fund will be reimbursed. As far as building the park and maintaining it, there are several options. And these will all be laid out when we put together the conference of park plan. One option is we've got cell towers with leases that we will renew. And they can generate income. And there's been some estimates between $80,000 and $90,000 a year. And then we can look at the Conservation Futures Fund and see if there is room in there to use the maintenance of the lands we purchase to help us maintain that area. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Yes, I support using the Conservation Futures Fund to, for the reconvenance land. I think that the ongoing maintenance will be the trick. We may need to have some sort of user fees as we do in many parks throughout the county. I think that can start to help give us some money back into the system for maintenance. That's the same problem that the Bellinghams has with Greenways. Greenways acquires a lot of land, but we have, you know, we always have that struggle of how do we maintain it? There's a fund that's set aside, like a trust fund, out of the Greenways money that's set aside for maintenance. So that's something that the county could think about is if we have some sort of an endowment fund like the city has, that we could use for ongoing maintenance of the park. And also, I think, you know, getting more out of the Conservation Futures Fund for maintenance is probably going to be needed because it's a lot of land to maintain. But it's such a, I'm getting the red flag.
All right, thank you very much. Next to the microphone, we have Carl Lupiano. This goes to Bill Knutson.
The bulk commodity terminal has been very controversial. But if it passes the EIS and it's a done deal, how should council deal with it? What are the next steps?
This is Bill Knutson, running for reelection to Waukun County Council. And as a council member, we have certain criteria that we have to live with. And one of those is that if this does go through the process, we will have to make a decision as a quasi-judicial body. That's a tongue twister. And as a quasi-judicial role, we have to maintain an open mind. And at that point, weigh all the criteria that were given and try to come up with a decision. And so as such, we try to do like a juror at this stage. And we try to remain neutral and get information when we're given instructions to get information. So that's why you're not hearing a lot of talk about it, is because we will be a quasi-judicial body when we rule on that. So we have to make a decision as such.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, that's all the names that we had in the hat. So we got one over here in the corner. Just a second there Greg, we'll get to your question. But if anyone else has a question, they'd like to come up and ask one, please line up at the microphone and we'll take them one by one. We have a few minutes left here before the candidates get to do their closing two-minute remarks. So Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Dave. I've heard a lot of comments here tonight regarding the Growth Management Act and applying to the county. And I realize you're all hopefully county officials. I've also sat through a lot of planning committee meetings. And my question is, the Growth Management Act also applies to the city. And if the city is not providing the land for the people to live in the way they want to live and continue to develop parks in the city and land that shouldn't be developed, why is the county the bad guy?
And we got Wymer and Luke.
Well, I'm not sure there's a good guy, bad guy here because the Growth Management Act says that we're supposed to work together. It doesn't always work out that well. But the county is the overarching one that has to eventually pass the county plan. Certainly, we're about to enter into that whole thing again. And you've been to some of the meetings where we're getting our briefings. We're going to be going through the numbers again. The cities are going to come to us with proposals about how they want to change their city limits to accommodate the new growth numbers. And then we need to know accommodate the new growth numbers, and then we need to negotiate with all the cities and the county needs to come up overarching to try to meet the city's needs but still meet the rural needs to protect resource land. So it's a negotiated effort, so there's not really a good guy or a bad guy, hopefully.
Michelle Luke, I really have a lot of hope that this go-around will be different than the last time. I think that we're...there's agreement. The council has telegraphed that they're going to use the mid-range number this time and so that we're going to start out with a more realistic population number. There's a consultant working now on jobs, and we're working more closely with the small cities this time, and so I'm hopeful that we're going to get a better result this time because of the process.
Thank you very much. Since I don't have the name in front of me, for those up to the microphone, please state your name and then ask your question.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Lurch. I did put a card in a hat. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm gonna speak to slaughterhouses, and I know they have been renamed packinghouses, but as Ms. Kerschner described them, they are slaughterhouses. They are an industry or a small business that you would like to put on private property. This gets to the water issue. The native tribes have the first water, or should I say the salmon do, then comes PUD, then farms and private. The question is simple. Why have you renamed slaughterhouses, packinghouses, and how does developing industry in the rural lands constitute...make this okay to have slaughterhouses all over the county?
Please keep your questions to 10 to 15 seconds. Thank you.
Yes, you're correct. I did. I did rename them packinghouses. And the reason I did that in a 10-page letter that I wrote to the council was because I felt it more accurately represented the need in Waukem County for our agricultural community to have value-added products. That was a definition that came from EPA, and I felt that it was better to have a definition that was defined by EPA than have something...a definition that was made up by planning staff. This is definitely an agricultural accessory use, and as proposed, it will definitely fit into the size and scale that is agriculture in Waukem County. The Growth Management Act allows for agricultural accessory uses in the ag zone. Our comp plan calls for it specifically, federally inspected meat processing plants of which we have one that is incredibly inadequate to collect, to connect 95,000 head of cattle to a 205,000
Your town.
Person, community who prides themselves in their local flavor.
Well, that pretty much answers your question, Rhonda. Yes, we renamed it to packinghouses because we felt it was more accurate description because there are more activities that fall under that title. It's not just the slaughter, it's also some of the processing and packaging and everything. From the beginning, I had thought it was a good idea to allow slaughter and packinghouses in agricultural zones. I agree that it's important to have local value-added activities to agriculture. That is how agriculture can survive and make money and be independent, and I think that's something we have to strive for. The problem with the ordinance as written is that we have taken something we want to see as a general idea and been a bit reckless with the language, and I think we need to be much more responsible. We need to make sure we are careful with what we are getting, how we write the labels. The devil's always in the details, and we are working on it, and I think we will have safe, humane, and environmentally friendly slaughter and packinghouses in Waukem County. We just have to get it right.
Thank you.
The other two are left to the right, so please go ahead.
Bradley Sweeney, reporter with the Political Jump Team. My question is this. As a defender of the free market, I was shocked and horrified by the city of Bellings' recent decision to ban all retail marijuana stores within the city limits of Bellings. Is the county council considering such a similar ill-advised and foolish measure?
We'll hand this one to Wymer Luke.
My understanding is they're all opening up in Ferneale, but I... The mayor agrees with me, I see. I've heard no talk amongst any of the council members. There's been nothing on our agenda about that issue.
I would have to say that I find government moves very slowly. I think that there's been time to work it out. It was a surprise that in July, they still don't know what they're going to do, but they have...in my view, in a business world, it wouldn't have taken so long, but in the world of government, it's like turning an aircraft carrier.
Alan Brown, I've been an active firefighter for almost 40 years. I have a question about Waukem Medic One. One, would you raise taxes? Two, would you have them tighten your belts? Or three, would you have them cut service?
To Buchanan and Kerschner.
I'm a...this is Barry Buchanan. I'm a very big supporter of keeping a unified system and keeping the levels of service the same as they are now. We're only gonna experience a higher call volume as we grow, so for us to go backwards and try to cut services on the EMS program would be an archaic thing to do. It would be a big mistake. We would never be able to build that system back up to cover the capacity that's gonna need to have. So I am totally in favor of keeping the system both unified and level of service the same as it is today.
Okay, I'm Kathy Kerschner, and I will point out that Barry did not answer that question. Of course, it's great to want all of the above, but there are costs to all of the above. I've been working with Medic One and Waukem Seven to...well, 106 and Waukem Seven in the Medic One system to try to find how we can make this work. We've got some reserves, but they're running out fairly quickly. There's possibility of reducing a unit, there's the possibility of keeping service the same, but I am, I'll agree with Barry, I am a strong supporter of keeping the Medic One system unified, and I'm working on finding a solution. Other council members are also working on that. So, it's an issue coming up, and we need to stay involved and informed. Thanks for the question.
All right, next up.
Karen Brown, Waukem County. I was at a Parks Commission meeting, I'm Lightly, I'm Parks Director, and the Commission and the Parks Director really wanted to put in windmills, wind towers on the top of the ridge of the Lake Waukem reconveyance property. I would like to know how the council would deal with that. One, you would see it forever, take horrible views away, and we take the views away. Who wants to look out the window and see wind towers? Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill Cunson.
Yeah, that's been my problem with reconvenance throughout the whole process, is it seems like it's the answer that everybody wants to hear at that given moment, whether it's windmills, extreme mountain biking, you know, there's been horses, bikes, whatever. It seems like the recreational activities are always fluctuating. It seems like the uses are always fluctuating, but yet, if this was such a great deal, why wouldn't the council let the voters decide on it? Like I said... It would've been on the ballot and no cost to anybody else. If it was such a great deal, why did they have to say it was gonna improve water quality when they knew that it wasn't? And most of the council members said... Everybody wants to hear at that given moment to sell it. So, I would invite you to look at what you're really getting and what it's costing.
Chris Holtermann. A recent Washington State Farm Bureau study argues that industries like agricultural will reap huge rewards not only from the construction of the bulk commodity storage facility, but through the upstream impacts of increased trade on the whole, such as freer trade between US and Asian Pacific region, additional jobs created and income associated from those jobs, expansion of domestic industry, especially ag in Waukem County and Washington State. If everything passes with the EIS, what will be your guiding principle in approval or denial of permitting for the Gateway Pacific Terminal development?
Wymer and Luke, please.
Well, I think I heard a couple of questions in there, and one was related to ag benefits of a bulk commodity terminal. And the shoreline permit that's already been potentially approved out there, that was the vision of that permit, that it could be a variety of different things going across that pier, and there was hopes that it would deal with wheat and other types of ag things, and I think that would have a huge benefit to agriculture and the whole region, not only Washington State. What we've heard about, and like people have said, we haven't heard much because we're not supposed to hear about it, is the new proposal out there is more focused on coal, at least initially. So, it's hard to imagine how that benefits ag quite as much, but the EIS isn't in yet. We need to wait for that EIS and all the associated studies that actually bring us the facts, because at this point, we're just hearing opinions from both sides, and once we get all the facts, then we can weigh those and decide what the costs and benefit are to people like ag and to labor and to the environment.
I'll agree about waiting to get the facts. It is interesting to hear about all the potential opportunities that there could be. Some of us went today on a tour to some of the berry farms and saw the technology involved in processing berries and the infrastructure there and that our berry production is worldwide. And so, it is interesting to see what the potentials could be, but again, right now, it's...so far, those are still in fantasy land.
All right, we'll go over to this side.
My name is Ben Nelson. Do you think that increased rates of gun ownership make our community more safe or less safe, and why?
That goes to Mann and Ellen Voss.
The question was, do increased rates of gun ownership make us safer or less safe? That's an hard question. I don't know. I think if everybody's packing all the time, you're likely to see more people shooting each other. If we're talking about people walking around that are carrying more than the police have in their arsenal, that is concerning to me. So, in general, I mean, I think I know the root of your question. I support the Second Amendment. I'm a...actually, I'm a member of the NRA, but I think there is a point at which we say, you know what, we don't want citizens having nukes in their backyard. There is a limit to the Second Amendment.
Interesting enough, I'm not a member of the NRA, but I should be. I most definitely think that more law-abiding citizens carrying firearms keeps citizens more safe. I think that the studies that are out there prove that. I think if you look at mass casualty incidences, as the prettiest way, I guess I could put it, they overwhelmingly occur in gun-free zones. So, in a minute, I don't think I can expand on that much more, but I think the data shows, and I do believe that law-abiding citizens having firearms definitely keeps us more safe.
All right, next question. Excuse me.
The county jails that currently exist have subhuman conditions. Would you be willing to spend a night in the jail to confirm my fact-based, reality-based opinion?
First, it's Buchanan.
This is Kathy Kerschner. Thanks, Bob, for that question. You've invited me to do that before. I spent an hour in the jail, and that's all I really needed to spend in the jail, to confirm your fact-based observation and experience. That county jail is an abomination. It is something that we should all be...almost ashamed that we send our county staff in there to work and that we have people that are locked up in there. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that, but thanks for the invitation, but I'm gonna pass.
I would certainly go for a couple hours, yes, but I think...and it is an abomination. It is something that is...on a county our size, it's...it is embarrassing to have something that's that dilapidated and that subhuman for staff, for the people that are incarcerated. It's something that needs to be fixed, and I would love to take a tour and really get a flavor of what's going on in there because it's something we have to fix. It's just something we can't be proud of at all here, and we have to get a facility that is affordable for Waukem County but has good health standards, good new equipment, and the things that we need to keep everybody safe.
All right, this is the last question. We only have three minutes, and then we must begin the...no, this is the last question.
I'm Karen Brown. I've been at several committee meetings lately, and I've heard this term that we can re-educate the people to think how we think by our elected official statements. I'm getting really tired of hearing that because I don't wanna be re-educated to think the proper way.
We need a question, though, please.
How do you feel about that?
And that's for Cunson.
Well, unfortunately, for the past four years, I've been getting re-educated, let me tell you. Sometimes not for the best. It seems like in...coming from the private sector into government, the way things get done is completely opposite, and it's frustrating. Now, do I think we need a mass re-education project and how to get everybody thinking the same? No, that's the great thing about this community, is we all have diverse opinions, and they all have value. You know, we need to take into account what people say, and we need to listen, and that's what's good government. It seems like a lot of times, people...we go into things with preconceived notions and an agenda, and that's not good government. We need a government that listens and takes into account what's going on with everybody, so...and I can promise you I'll do that for another four years.
All the questions from the public at this time, so with the remaining half hour that we have, we are going to dedicate...or give each candidate two minutes to do...talk about whatever they want, whether it's a stump speech or on a specific topic. That two minutes is up to you. Why don't we begin in numerical order by district here? So we'll start with District One, Kathy Kerschner versus Barry Buchanan, and you can fight it out who would like to go first.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for being willing to participate in the political process. I'm Kathy Kerschner, and I'm running for reelection to the Waukem County Council. I've had a wonderful time serving the last four years, and I'm asking you to support me to win reelection so I can serve four more years. We've accomplished a lot together, but there's still a lot of work to do. I had a bit of a health scare in 2009, and I was diagnosed with lymphoma and went through chemotherapy treatment, and that process really changed my viewpoint on what it means to be healthy and leaving healthy legacies to our children. So, my So my campaign this year is focused around helping communities, and to have a healthy community, we need to all have healthy, have a healthy economy, we need to have a healthy environment, and we need to be healthy people. I am looking forward to serving you as we work through the issue with the Gateway Pacific Terminal, as we build a new jail, and as we get the water issues sorted out in our county. My philosophy is that we are the local citizens who live here, we benefit from the decisions that we make, and therefore, the decisions made here should be local decisions. So I'm fighting for you to keep Waukesha County local, and I'm fighting for you to keep Waukesha County healthy, and I just want to clarify that comment I made to Bob. The hour I spent in jail, it was a tour. Anyway, I really appreciate your time tonight. I'm Kathy Kerschner. I ask for your vote and your support in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barry Buchanan. I'm Barry Buchanan, running for Waukesha County Council, District One, and it's an exciting time to be in local Waukesha County politics. Just as you heard tonight, all the different issues that are before, gonna be before this next council, and how engaged you all are, that's what makes our process great, that's what makes our country great, is that we listen to everybody who goes to the microphone. And I think that's something that I bring to the table running for county council, is I will always listen to you, I will always go out and meet with you and have coffee with you, and do the things that we need to do to have that kind of a viable discussion to make our community better. I'm good working under pressure. I worked on a flight deck of the USS Constellation when I was in the Navy. I was a flight deck troubleshooter, had to make instantaneous decisions that saved pilots' life or crew members' lives on the ground. Once I got out of the Navy, I went to work for Lockheed, and I worked on some of the biggest projects in the 1980s, the Hubble Space Telescope, other shuttle programs, the Trident submarine program. And I gained a lot of experience, both technical and how to deal with people, and how to get, move projects forward, how to budget and do the things that's necessary in government. Government needs to be more efficient. We do need to operate more like a business. I'm a small business owner in Bellingham. I have a consulting firm that does management and workforce development. I think that's important, to have workforce development programs that move your staff along. But I think, more than anything, I bring decision-making qualities that are something that we have in common with county residents. My grandparents, as I mentioned, moved here in 1907. We have a history in this county, and I am asking you for your vote and your support this November, Barry Buchanan, running for District One, Waukesha County Council.
I'm Ken Man, Waukesha County Council, District Two. Ken Man versus, and Ben Allen Boss. You guys may choose who will go first.
Thank you. My name's Ken Man. I am your Waukesha County Council member, and it is a privilege and an honor to represent you on the county council. I truly love serving on the council. I meet so many people who care about our country and our community and our friends and families. All of you here today, who are taking time out from a beautiful evening, thank you for being here and for caring about Waukesha County. That is really what makes democracy go, is, as Luke pointed out, it's like turning an aircraft carrier around. The public process may be slow, but it is a beautiful thing to have. So thank you for being here. As far as my policy positions, hopefully the questions you've asked tonight have helped you a little bit. I consider myself a social libertarian and a fiscal hawk. There is a lot of things I have voted against funding, and you have to learn to say no to people. People come to you and they want you to pay for stuff, they want you, the council, to give things. You have to learn to say no, and that is a skill that's acquired. On the campaign trail, everybody likes to make promises, but up on the podium, when I'm managing your money, you have to say no sometimes. I'm a small business owner, I have two kids, I have a beautiful wife, we live in Bellingham, and I would appreciate four more years to represent you and work on the issues facing Waukesha County. Please look me up on Facebook, Ken Man Waukesha, you can find me there, and I will engage and respond and basically talk a lot at you on Facebook and respond to any other questions that you might have. So I'm Ken Man, and I appreciate your vote for reelection. Thank you.
I'm Ben Allen Boss, someone you may know me as, my alter ego Farmer Ben. As the name implies, I'm a fifth-generation Waukesha County farmer. I'm a husband and father of three. I attended college and studied at Huxley College of the Environment. I've worked since 2001 in the Operations Department at Cherry Point. I'm a member of the Waukesha County Planning Commission, and I'm active with the Catalans Association. I coach Little League football. I feel that I have a diverse background that would well represent the diverse community that is Waukesha County. I was motivated to run because as I've gotten more involved with business on my farm, having an environmental background, it seemed interesting to me that all sorts of issues come up as either-or propositions. To me, that just doesn't seem normal. Blaming rural living on not having a harvestable salmon population, folks, that just doesn't seem normal. Having, people claiming that we can either have water quality or we can have agriculture in Waukesha County, folks, that just doesn't seem normal to me. We can absolutely have both. Having a council, a Waukesha County Council that represents a county like Waukesha without having a farmer on it, folks, that doesn't seem normal to me either. Let me bring my diverse background to the council, where I feel that there is a definite lack of understanding of agricultural issues, and I would like to implement my working knowledge of environmental compliance. Thank you.
District Three, Carl Wymer and Michelle Luke.
I'm Michelle Luke, and I'm running for county council in the third district. I currently serve as chair of the Waukesha County Planning Commission, and that's where I often hear from folks. This is a citizens advisory group that vets proposals from the planning department, and the folks that come to our meetings represent you. They tell us about issues, and I find that issues need to be more clarified and simplified before they're worked on, and that's something that I've encouraged the planning commission to do. When planning makes a proposal and they start out with saying, "Well, it's complicated," then I say, "You know, we need to unwind it, we need to walk it back, we need to put the dots closer together, because regulations that are for people of Waukesha County should be understood by the people of Waukesha County. You shouldn't have to be an expert or hire one to understand the regulations that you're expected to live by." I'm a longtime resident here. I live on Hami Island. I've been married for 31 years. I've got three grandchildren that live in Waukesha County, and it's their future that we're planning for. Most of us are up here of a certain age, but it's for younger people that are, that we're planning for. I'm proud to have younger people working with me on my campaign. They've contributed a lot, they've taught me some of the affirmments that you use on texting and Facebook, and that's been a real education. But I will respect your tax dollars, you work hard to earn your money, and I'll work for you to help make Waukesha County a better place for all of us. Thank you.
I'm Carl Wymer, and I'm running for reelection for my third term on the Waukesha County Council, and I'd just like to start by thanking the Waukesha Tea Party for holding this very efficient and respectable forum this evening. It was a great forum. I've lived here in Waukesha County for 29 years, raised my family here, most of that time just outside Ferndale. I've run three businesses, like I mentioned earlier, while I've been here. The first one was here in Ferndale, working with severely disabled folks. The second one was an organization in Bellingham, where I started the Restore in Bellingham and another Restore in Seattle, and took that organization from four employees up to over 50 employees. And then when the pipeline exploded in 1999 in Bellingham, I was chosen to be the executive director of the National Pipeline Safety Trust, and have been doing that for about 10 years now, working on safety issues pretty much outside of Washington State, because the pipelines around here are really upgraded and are pretty safe now, but in other places all around the country, and have testified to Congress, I can't even remember seven or eight times, I think, on pipeline safety issues. I'm, over the last, oh, 15 years, I've been on over 20 local advisory committees, from mental health, developmental disabilities, economic development, shellfish protection. I've been appointed by the governor to be on statewide committees, and I've been appointed by the secretary of transportation to be on U.S. Department of Transportation advisory committees. So I have a lot of experience, and I'd like to, four more years of experience on the council. We have huge issues coming at us in the next four years, the Cherry Point Terminal being one, the new jail being one, a whole range of Lake Waukesha issues, getting into compliance on the pollution going in the lake, and planning for that new park that we put around the lake, and then just working with the small cities for growth management compliance. So I appreciate being here tonight, and I'd be honored to have your vote in November.
Thank you very much. Last to the table is Mr. Bill Knutson.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. My name is Bill Knutson, and first I want to thank the Tea Party, KGMI, and all you folks for coming out on a nice, hot, sunny, wonderful day in Waukesha County. That being said, I'm sure you all want to get out of here, so you don't want to hear me go rattle on with a long talk, because I don't know about the rest of you, but they gave us two bottles of water in an hour and a half time, and I think it's about time to get rid of them. I would like to say that for the past four years I've been on the Waukesha County Council, I ran four years ago with a concern for agriculture, and that is just as vital today as it is, as it was four years ago. In fact, agriculture has been so appreciative of the work that we've done in the last four years, that the Washington State Farm Bureau endorsed me, as well as the Waukesha County Farm Bureau and Dairy Federation. We've got a lot of work to do. We've got four years that are gonna be critical for Waukesha County. We've got water issues that we need to resolve, and we need someone that can negotiate with all the parties involved in those. We've got economic issues. I mean, we've got people that can't feed their families, and we need to figure that out, we need to get, we need to help these folks. Government doesn't create jobs, but boy, we can sure make a system where jobs weren't so difficult to create. And I grew up here, I've lived here all my life, I've lived here for the past 51 years. I love Waukesha County. I want my kids and my grandkids to say the same thing someday, and I want them to be able to find a job so they can stay here, don't have to move down to Seattle and do that. I want to see Waukesha County that's just as beautiful as it is right now 10 years from now. So we need to be responsible in the things we do. And I just want to thank you all for coming here. I'd like to say I'm Bill Knutson, I'm running for reelection to Waukesha County Council, and I appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it is one last thing that we are gonna do. We want to make this a little fun now. So each candidate can ask their opponent one question they would like to see answered, since we have about 10 minutes left to do so. Bill, yours is a little easier with bread.
Well, I was more not to do the cleanies with them, so.
Probably not.
I can't talk to the empty chair. Well, that being said, I guess I gotta pass the mic down the road then.
Ask your opponent a question. Someone's got to... No?
I'll do it.
Okay, take the microphone.
How long do I have to ask the question? So, Ken? Growing up here, I spent eight years milking cows, I was a commercial pesticide applicator for raspberries, I raised direct market grass, I used to eat pastries, pork. I've robed potatoes, I've harvested potatoes, I've planted potatoes, I've cooked and eaten potatoes, probably too much. What have you done specifically in your lifetime that would help you understand the complex agricultural issues that come before the county council?
I'm glad you asked me that question, Ben. I have worked on a dairy farm when I was younger, several dairy farms, actually. I have milked cows, I have plowed fields, driven tractors, wiped out on a motorcycle, running up, trying to round up some loose livestock, and the only thing I'll tell you is, having planted seeds in the ground, or having eaten meat, or having lived on a farm, worked on a farm, I've done all those things, but the county council's job is so much broader than that, and there's a lot of legal stuff we gotta work on, there's a lot of financial issues we have to work on. We cannot just focus on one issue at a time, we have so many balls in the air. So I do have some agricultural experience, nowhere near what you have, obviously, but I would say I certainly have enough, and I certainly have good enough relationships with farmers all throughout this county. My doors are always open, I always answer my phone, I always respond to emails, so I feel like I have a good handle on it, and I've been doing a good job of representing folks for the last four years.
Go ahead, ask you maybe your opponent.
This is awkward. But I, it is fun, yeah, we are very friendly together. I, of course, observe your literature and some of your mailings, and in some of your mailings, you highlight your Huxley studies and your sustainable connections, connections, and then other literature, you don't mention it. So I really want to kind of know, are you an environmentalist?
Absolutely, unequivocally, yes. As a hunter, as a farmer, I would call myself an environmentalist of the highest kind. Whether I'm at the oil refinery or at my home on the farm, environmental compliance is always in the forefront. I think that I exude my environmentalism with a working understanding of the realities of life. And that, thanks for the applause, and that, and I show my environmentalism by what I do, I don't just talk about it.
Michelle Luke, if you want it.
We all have personal lives, and I know you work, you have a day job as well as your council job. What do you do for recreation, and would that include...
I can boil water with the best of them. Recreation, good question. One of the reasons I ended up out here, I'm from Michigan originally, I wasn't, my grandpa didn't grow up here, I moved here, I'm like the majority of people in Waukesha County, I think. And the reason I came out here is I did internships when I was in college in the national parks, and I fell in love with the idea of mountains, because we didn't have mountains in Michigan. So, and we still do that, my wife and I, these days, we just finally went out and bought new backpacking equipment last summer, the ultra-light stuff, because as you and I know, as we get to this age, you can't carry as much as you used to, so still try to do a lot of hiking. To your cooking question, there are some things. I have one specialty, it's interesting, they spelled my name wrong on my name tag up here today, they gave me a K on the Carl to, I guess, highlight my German heritage, and one thing that I cook that no one else in the family does... in the family does is a thing that my grandfather called nifliz, and it's often referred to as Spotsen, I think if you go to a German restaurant, you have an old German press where you push these noodles through, and I'm the only one in the family that, well, I think they conned me into doing it actually, but that's my specialty, the German nifliz.
Sorry, Carl.
Thank you. Would you like to rebuttal? Okay, and if no one has any other questions for the candidates, then we got to, we got to get ourselves to 8:30 here, so the next thing I would like to ask, we'll go down the table, is how do you differentiate yourself from the other candidate in about, in a quick 30 to 45 seconds?
Start there.
Go ahead, just start, go ahead.
I think the way I differentiate myself between Michelle is experience, you know, 20 years I've had vast experience in a whole range of different businesses, from contracting to assembly to consulting, I've been on 20-plus different advisory committees, I've got two college degrees, so I think I have way more experience than Michelle does, all over four years on the planning commission, certainly has given her a good education on planning in the county.
I think I would differentiate myself because I've come up through the ranks, I used to be one of you sitting in the audience, and experiencing the effects of local government, and feeling that there was a detachment from people making decisions to the people they were making decisions for, and that's where I would see that, where we differentiate.
This is Ken Mann, for those of you in the radio land. You know, I think I have a very diverse experience, background in finance when I lived in New York, real estate development now, owning a small business, but you know, frankly, Ben has a lot of those backgrounds and some diverse stuff that I don't have, I think we both have that. It just comes, I think, from your perspective and your priorities, I think both of us have good family values, we both love Waukam County, and I, knowing Ben and some of his, who his friends are, who his political affiliates are, you know, I think it's safe to say, he hosted some freedom rally at your farm, right, the Tea Party rally or something, so I would assume that he's a little bit more right of center than I am. I consider myself a moderate, I consider Ben a little bit further to the right than that.
No, I think you, you're accurate. Thank you for the kind words. Obviously, I'll give him some kind words, he's tall and handsome, and I'm kind of short-squat and bald, for those of you in radio land. I think with me, what you see is what you get. What I do is, is I produce things that people need, and I try and do it in the most responsible manner I can. I'm not a politician, and I tend to say too much, Ken's much more well-spoken than I am. I think I'm well-grounded in who I am and where I come from, and where I come from is Waukam County, fifth generation, and I think that, that is a slight difference. I do agree that Ken and I share the same values, family values, we both love Waukam County incredibly. Be local, be local, be local, vote local.
And this is Kathy Kerschner, running for county council in District One, and since the question was asked, I can sit here thinking about what distinguishes me from my opponent, and he's sitting next to me, and he and I are both wearing blue, and our name tags are both blue, we both served in the Navy, we both have run businesses, so I'm thinking, we have a lot in common. We both love Waukam County, and we both served in different capacities. So, when I think about what is going to distinguish me from Mr. Buchanan, I'm going to say commitment and leadership. Commitment to serving Waukam County on the county council, I have been serving for four years, I know that I want to run for reelection for that particular office. And leadership, I've served as your chair for two years, and have accomplished quite a bit working together with people that don't always agree with, with me or with the other person that I'm talking to, and I've been able to lead people through a process and come out on the other side with a solution that works for most. And I am very happy to be running again for the council seat, vote Kathy Kerschner in November.
I would definitely agree with Kathy's assessment that our backgrounds aren't very similar. I think, I think what it is, is the lens at which we look at things and our values. We talked a lot tonight about growth management, I'm a very big believer in that, I don't think we should be litigating against the Growth Management Act, I think we should be moving forward. When we had problems in our economy, which we still do, but when they were really in the tank, you know, we had, my opponent voted against two times running, the only closing vote to fund the food bank, I would have voted to fund that food bank because it was important to those folks out in the community that were really hurting. So, I think it's, the difference we have is how we look at things and, and the values that we place on that, we're both family people, we both, again, love Waukam County, but I just think it's the difference of our values that, that what the voters need to look at and decide on. Barry Buchanan, District One.
Hi, this is Bill Knutson. Differences between me and my opponent, I showed up, and I'll continue to show up. You know, I really, the differences, I really don't know, I don't, I don't know my opponent, I don't know whoever, I, he hasn't, I don't know how long he's been here, I don't know. So, I couldn't tell you the differences, I will say that I'm going to continue to work for the people of Waukam County, I'm going to continue to do my level best and try to hear everybody, and I look forward to another four years, and I appreciate your vote in November.
I'm going to pass the mic off to Carl for the closing remarks, and that will then conclude our candidate forum. Here you go, Carl.
I'd like to thank the candidates for putting up with the ad hoc. At the end, I think that was entertaining and probably as, probably as informative as any of it. Thank you for attending tonight's candidate forum, we hope this has given you a good understanding about the candidates and where they stand on the issues that you care about. The Waukam Tea Party slogan for this year is just show up, and aside from showing up for events like these, show up to council meetings, it's not hard to get to know these people on a first-name basis, and they can't represent you if they don't know you exist. So, show up. Next week, we'll be presenting a similar forum for Bellingham City Council and Port Commission candidates at the Bellingham High School Auditorium, and we hope you can show up for that one as well. When we, when you came in this evening, we handed a, handed you a packet that has a survey to rate the candidates, and we would like you to be sure to remember to fill those out and drop those off on the way out. Also, our donation jars are located on the tables just outside these doors, and your contributions are greatly appreciated and are largely responsible for our ability to sponsor tonight's event and events like this. The candidates will be outside with their signs and brochures, so please feel free to drop by and say hi and ask questions and pick up their candidate material. Thanks again, good night.